Sure, absolutely.
You know, I know that you've traveled a lot in Talbot County and you've met a lot of people, but I think it's always good to get the backstory. Every time we do this, you probably have been able to summarize it very well, but some people are going to be looking at you for the first time with this.
Right.
So I thought it'd be great just to, you know, how did you get here?
Well, that is very interesting. You know, the other night we did a forum with the Tuskegee Bay Foundation and the League of Women Voters. And before the forum, my wife, Maria, who's also my treasurer, she said, you know, the last couple of forums that you've been a part of, you've always jumped right in on an issue. You never really told people where you came from, how you got here, like you said, the backstory. So I took that to heart and I took a couple of moments just to basically reintroduce myself to some and introduce myself to others. So this is my third, I'm on my third term on the council. I'm trying to run for my fourth term. I was first introduced to the council in 2007 when Peter Carroll, who was a council member, decided that he was going to step down. And then my name was put forward by the Central Committee. And then after a really long summer, I was finally appointed to the council in November of 2007. My backstory is that I've been, I'm a graduate of the University of Delaware. I have an degree in criminal justice. I'm a member of the state's Criminal Justice Advisory Board. I've been appointed to that board by both Governor Amali and Governor Hogan. I'm a member of the Opium Operational Command Center, the OCC, which is based out of Westminster. That's some 26 different agencies of our own state trying to tackle the opioid problem that we're having here in Maryland and all across the nation. I've been a football coach here in Talbot County back once upon a time. I coached Little League football, the Talbot Braves, actually. We were, we went 1-7-1 that year and I guess I've never been asked to come back and coach again. And I was board president of Talbot Partnership for a time period, which is of course, you know, an advocacy group dealing with substance abuse here in the county. And I enjoyed working with Janet Pfeiffer and that board. I was past president of the Talbot, of the Neighborhood Service Center, which is our anti-poverty initiative here in Talbot County. I was vice president of that board, was president of that board for two years. And gosh, my dad was a steel worker in Bethlehem Steel for 42 years. He and my mother raised eight boys and my one sister in a two-bedroom row house down in Turner Station. And basically watching my dad get up in the morning and go off to work in those cold mornings and hot summers, the Bethlehem Steel gave me my work ethic. My mother was a stay-at-home mom, as you would expect, with that many kids at home, she couldn't do much else. But she was very active in the community. She was active in the PTA. She was active in the Parks and Recs. She was active in the Ladies Auxiliary to the VFW. So watching her volunteer around the community also gave me a sense of community. And so been blessed to have a father who was very strong provider, the silent type WWII vet, ex-Golden Glows boxing champion. And then having a mother who was very nurturing, very caring, and very giving. So that instilled a lot of who I am. Went off to the University of Delaware after paying some football at Dundalk High School. Was a all-county running back at Dundalk. And I'm a member of the Maryland Football Found, or the Greater Baltimore Football Foundation. And so I was selected to that back in 1980. Oh gosh, was it 85? No, 82, 1982, before I graduated. And so went up to Delaware, played a little football with the great Tubby Raymond, who's since passed away. And he was our football coach there at Delaware and played there. And as I said, graduated and with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. And went down to DC and worked a little bit down in the, now in the northern Virginia area. And then came back up to Maryland and started working with the Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services. And I've been with them for 25 years now.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, and so I've been, I've enjoyed the run. Again, gone a lot of paces, met a lot of people, been able to work in a lot of state subgroups, and which allowed me to, again, meet a lot of interesting people around the state, you know.
So, you know, the other thing I always want to ask is, and I'll have to change it for incumbents, but why, I mean, I, this is a lot of work. I mean, it is a lot of work. I see you guys everywhere. And I'm so amazed and awe of, you know, that kind of commitment. But as you know, you know, we are living in a really tough time politically. And you wonder, you know, why do you guys want to run again? You know, this is, this is not easy. I guess the next last four months of the council, maybe less, has been really tough on people. And I just, so I always want to kind of go back to that.
Right, right.
Why?
Well, again, it goes back to what I was telling you about a little bit earlier about my mom and my dad and what they instilled within me. And running for council back in 2006, 2005 was the furthest thing from my mind. I was doing my own thing and I was enjoying doing my own thing until I got a knock at the door by some gentleman from the Republican Central Committee. Said, hey Cory, you ever thought about running for council? And I'm like, no. But, you know, I was involved with the prison ministry here in Talbot County and also up at EPRU, which is the Eastern Pre-release Unit in Churchill. And I was going in there ministering with, to young men about how to change their life and how to come out and be productive citizens again in society. Because I think that's the important thing, not so much of what they've done to get themselves incarcerated, but who they, who they feel they are now and what they want to contribute when they leave the institution. And so I was involved in prison ministries. I was running a father's group down in Doorchester County for the Health Department. We had about 10 to 15 guys weekly that were coming in and they were young fathers. And again, we were trying to just instill in them the importance of fatherhood, which is a quickly vanishing, a segment of our family unit. You see the number of single moms and grandparents raising children, but the fathers have disappeared. And I know, again, what it's like to have a strong father provider in the household. So I was doing that back in 2004, 2005 and running Fatherhood Program in Doorchester, ministering to incarcerated men and women here in Talbot County and also up in Churchill. And then got a knock at the door and said, hey, you know, what do you think about running for council? So that was 2007, here we are in 2018, and yeah, time flies.
You have a lot more information, you can make a different decision.
Yeah, I do, I do. But, and it's always that one more thing, you know, I want to do this one more thing. If we get this one more thing done, then I'll go ahead and I'm done. Of course, the hospital has always been, ever since I've joined the, but a part of the council in 2007, the rebuilding of the Eastern Hospital has always been that one thing I would like to be a part of, to put that shovel in the ground and say, hey, we're finally on the road to build this, this regional hospital. Been very thankful to Ken Kuzel. He's been meeting with myself and Mayor Willie. About once every other month, we sit down for coffee and we look at the progress and where the hospital is moving towards. He came before council last Tuesday and gave the full council an update as to where we are. He was gracious enough to come up to Mako this past summer and brief the entire mid-shore elected body on where Shore Health is, on its movement of the hospital here in Eastern, as well as the changes they're going to make down in Doorchester County. So that's that one thing that, you know, I would like to see done. And then, of course, we had the comprehensive plan that this current council worked on. We have the zoning ordinance, which this council just passed recently. And there are some other things that, you know, personally, I would like to see the county move towards. You know, affordable housing has always been the one, one thing that I've always given the council a very low grade on. And I think that we need to do and can do a better job to address affordable housing in the county. And I would say that Eastern has done a wonderful job, a better job, at addressing affordable housing, but not so much in the surrounding county. Now, when I say that, there's going to be some people that's going to see this and going to hear this and they're going to go into a tizzy. And when you talk about affordable workforce housing, maybe I need to be clear with that. You know, I'm talking about housing for your teachers, housing for your volunteer firemen, housing for those custodians that's going to work at this new regional hospital. So when I talk about workforce housing, affordable workforce housing, that's what I'm talking about. We're not talking about Section 8 housing, we're not talking about tenant housing. We're talking about affordable housing that the working class in Talbot County can live in. As wonderful as Eastern is, I live in Eastern, but as wonderful as Eastern is, not everybody wants to live within the three mile square area that is Eastern. You know, there's going to be some people that's going to want to live outside the county and enjoy living in other areas around the county. So that's, that's the one thing that I've said. The this council, the previous councils that I've been a part of have not done a very good job at how to address that.
So when you, when you look at some of these zoning issues, and I know that it got quite contentious about the extension of sewer in the Bay 100. There was a lot of anxiety about this being a door opener for major development. Why was there so much worry? Do you feel that the council directed that, resolved that?
Well, I don't know whether, I guess it's up to the individual whether or not they felt it had been resolved appropriately. Why the anxiety, if you're asking? I think there was a lot of misinformation. I think there was a lot of persons who were fanning flames and getting people stirred up unnecessarily. When you look at the resolution that the council passed unanimously, that was passed by the Planning Commission unanimously, and I'm speaking about Resolution 250. Resolution 250 that we passed last year, which allowed for the extension of sewer into the Bosman-Nevett corridor in the county. That resolution talked about those properties that were eligible. It talked about the sewer lines that were going into zoning areas that was going to be eligible zoning areas. And then those connecting lines that were not going to be eligible for sewer. We looked at lot size. We looked at the proximity to the line. And there was extensive, extensive map editing, or I should say, map review by the Planning Office, by America Ebertery's office, by the Planning Commission, by the County Council. We had many work sessions on 250 before we passed it. And 250, in my opinion, basically laid out who and who would be eligible to go into that sewer line and who would not be eligible for sewer line. We looked at lots that were already improved lots and lots that were unimproved lots. So we knew the number of lots, or the number of possible connections on that sewer line before that bill was even passed, that resolution was even passed. That's number one. Then number two, you have state law, which says that zoning is, is under the control of the local government, either your municipality or your counties. And that has always been the case, that when it comes to zoning, the county, the state has given that right, that authority to the local jurisdictions. Then number three, you have case law, Maryland case law, that when you talk about changing of character, that a sewer line is not justification for a change of character so that a property owner can now raise the question of access to a sewer line. So you already had three items in place, in my opinion, that basically covered the question of whether or not a sewer line going into the Bosman-Nevett corridor was at jeopardy for expansion of growth and sprawl and all these other nice words people like to spread around. So I felt quite comfortable that the bases were covered. And again, I think persons for their own personal gain started fanning flames and raising doubt and bringing other things into question without basically educating people fully on what was done previously, what state law had already said, and what Maryland case law had already found in those cases.
Fair enough. The other zoning issue that popped up, of course, was the short-term rental issue.
Yeah.
And I just, I'll just open that door so you can summarize your position.
Well, short-term rental is a right. It is a right in the state, is a right here in Talbot County that a property owner can use his property to rent out for persons who are traveling through the county. There was some question about whether or not Talbot County in the past had done its due diligence when it comes to regulating enforcement appropriately of the short-term rental process. And I would say in a grading that we will probably a C. We were not proactive enough. We did not address those one or two problem management areas enough. And we decided to address that. When you, when you look at the number of short-term rentals that we had in the county, and I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 132, I believe, somewhere in that neighborhood. So when you look at the number of short-term rentals that we had, there was less than 2% that were of any, that were, that were problems that were raised to the level of bringing it to the attention of the planning officer. So it wasn't as if you had 50% failure rate when it comes to short-term rentals used in the county. So the Planning Commission looked at short-term rental question. They gave us back their, and again, for persons who are running around saying that the county council, single-handedly or unanimity, unanimity, thank you, was going about changing the short-term rental code, that's not true. The Planning Commission looked at our short-term rentals. They gave us their input on the short-term rental process. We looked at it. We sat down with the Planning Officer, Ms. Vertary. There were some more changes that we added to it as well. And there were several public meetings on the question of short-term rentals. So it wasn't as if three members of the council ran out there and jammed the short-term rental process in place. That's, that's furthest from the truth. What, what my, my take on the short-term rental process was this, is that there was not, in any business, you look at what's your failure rate? You know, if you've got a product coming off a product line, or cars, or batteries, or whatever the case may be, what's the percentage of this product that is failing when it hits the consumer? What's the, what's your failure rate? And based on that, that data, then you got to make adjustments. Either your, your procedures are wrong, you've got contamination on the line, your mold is failing and it's breaking before it hardens. So what's causing the failure? And the question of short-term rentals, again, because it was probably less than 1.5, 2% that were a problem, you had to focus on what was those, what's the problem? So what we did was that we put things in place to address the failure rate. We brought in a co-compliance officer. We're going to re-energize, reactivate the short-term rental compliance board. We brought in a monitoring agency that's going to monitor social media sites to find out people who are trying to skirt the rules and rent without going through the process. We tightened down the process as far as getting a short-term rental license. We increased the fines for if you do get caught doing something wrong. And, but, we didn't put those in place until next year because we had to vote on them this year. So my, my approach was that let's address the failure rate. If you, if your, if your failure rate is contamination in the line, go in and address what the problem is. Don't shut down the entire line. And I think what some people were trying to do, because they don't like short-term rentals, and it's not a question of a person liking it or not liking it, it's a right. It is a right in the county to use your property in this manner. And what people, some people were not understanding was that as soon as you take this, as soon as you try, any county tried to eliminate short-term rentals, then you open yourself up for another lawsuit on the other hand. By property owners who are now going to go out and find themselves an attorney and come back and sue you for trying to do away with this, with this right. So I think that the council as a whole was very considerate, very open-minded. They listened to what the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission said. They listened to what the planning officer said. They took information in from various segments of the population, not from one string, but from various segments of the population. And we said, we're going to deal with the failure rate. Let's put things in place to address what's wrong. You don't, and the old cliche the mama used to say, you don't throw the baby out with the bath water. You change the water. You don't get rid of the baby. So what we, what we were trying to do, what we're trying to do is address the failure rate. What's the problem? Address the problem.
So speaking of problems, we have a challenge every year with our school budget. And we, it's been interesting, as I've covered this issue from county to county, how every organization, excuse me, municipality handles it differently. But you have consistently supported public schools. It's an expensive commitment. This comes up all, every year. How, you know, how do we get beyond maintenance of effort? And, you know, I just wanted to get a little bit better sense of your thoughts on Talbot County's commitment. There's special referendum on a cap front to help pay for some of these capitals?
I mean, public, I'm a product of public education. My children are a product of public education. All of my siblings are a product of public education. My mom and dad are a product of public education, you know, this. And so, again, my parents raised nine children. We all graduated from Dundalk High School. I mean, at one time, before a time period, if you go back and look at it, I think from 1968 until around 1989, 90, there was a pack in Dundalk High School. From my brother, myself, and my brothers, to my nieces and nephews. So for over 40 years, there was a pack in Dundalk High School. So my parents were strong proponents of education. Although my father himself didn't graduate, you know, because he went off to the military at the age of 16. But he still understood the value of an education. And he told myself and my siblings, you know, you're going to go to school off, you know, you're going to find somewhere else to be. And so we all knuckled down and did what we had to do. So, again, that's who I am. And when it comes to addressing our education problems here in Talbot County and funding is always going to be a major issue, we try to look for whatever creative ways we can to give the schools what they need to be successful. Maintenance of effort is a state requirement. You have to always meet that threshold, that magical formula that they come up with and say, hey, this is your, this is your number for this year. We have to hit it. And when we set that bar for, from the previous year, that's our starting point for the next year. We can't go below it. That's our starting point. We have also what's called non-rear-carrying projects or expenditures. And these are things that don't hit that maintenance of effort line item. So that's, that also helps us to pay for some things that the school would need without increasing that maintenance of effort number. And I think this year, we were, and we were successful in getting nearly a million dollars of non-rear-carrying items approved by the state school board. I think, I think over $800,000, if I remember correctly. And that's, that's a big number. That's a big number of items that, that we were able to get approved that didn't raise that maintenance of effort bar. So I will always be supportive of our schools. I think that Dr. Griffiths and her team have been very transparent with the council. We meet with them probably once a quarter, either for a breakfast dinner or for a breakfast meeting. We sit down and look over different capital projects. Of course, the main project right now, what is the rebuilding of the Moton-Dobson Elementary School here in Eastern. We look over our enrollment numbers. We look over other projects that they, that they may need to, to need to accomplish, whether it be new roof for the St. Michael's Eastern High School, or St. Michael's High School, Eastern Middle High School. So those discussions have been very transparent and those discussions have allowed council earlier in the process to kind of start digesting what the school may be asking for when it comes to March. And that was something that we put into place with Dr. Griffiths, maybe about two years ago, to say, hey, let's start meeting, you know, a year in advance, you know, so that when, when March comes around and we get your budget, it's not sticker shock. Like, well, where did this come from? You know, we have time to digest it over the months. And then when March comes around, we see it on the, on the line. We say, oh, well, we knew that was coming, let's go ahead and address it, yeah.
Thanks for that. As you know, there was, there has been a year-long birthday party in Talbot County.
Wow, yeah.
This, this very special man, Frederick Douglass, who was a truly American hero. And so it's just, I cannot think about him and not talk about race relations in our community, about diversity. You know, we've gone through, you and I, we've gone through this together. We went through the Talbot Boys controversy. That kind of national conversation has not simmered. It's actually in many ways increased, even, you know, beyond the figureheads of the Confederacy. It's now at the soldier level, so to speak. And I don't really want to rehash that or relitigate it, but I think the idea is that, you know, we have been challenged and yet we have this remarkable heritage with Douglass, this remarkable history. And so I just wanted to get a check-in on that.
It's, it's really an honor to be here in the birth county of Douglass and to watch all the things that have transpired over this year by the Frederick Douglass Honor Society and other groups who have come alongside and say, hey, we want to acknowledge and celebrate the man that is Frederick Douglass and what he meant, not just to Talbot County, not just to Maryland, not just to the United States, but also to the world. I understand that there is a group that is, that are going over to Scotland later this week. Because even in Scotland, there's a celebration of Douglass's life. And there's members that are going to be traveling over to Scotland to be a part of that from, from right here in little old Talbot County. Last weekend, when the Honor Society did their annual Douglas Day, which is getting bigger and bigger every year, my wife and myself and my two grandchildren, we were sitting out on the courthouse lawn, listening to the speeches. And it was a beautiful day and sunny and warm. And after things broke up there on the courthouse lawn, there were other activities at the library and over behind the courthouse. And I was standing there and a gentleman came up next to me. And I was standing near the Talbot Boys statue. And he came up next to me and he was, he was commenting about the uniqueness of having the Confederate Boys statue there. And then just 20 feet over to the left, there was, there was the Douglas statue. And he was from, I believe he said he was from Connecticut. He was a teacher, he had heard about the Douglas Day, and he had come down to witness himself. And so what I was saying to him, I said, well, what better place to bring a group of students and sit them in the grass and explain to them about the Confederate Boys statue and what the Confederacy was and what it stood for, good, bad, or indifferent? And then pick that class up and walk them just 20 feet over and sit them down in front of Douglas statue and then explain to them about this great man. And history, sometimes we may not like where we came from. We may not like what we've gone through. We may be ashamed of what we've gone through. It may hurt to think about it. And as I said to this gentleman from Connecticut, you know, good, bad, or ugly, history is history. And we can't whitewash it or tear it down or stick it in inside of closets. It's still going to be there. You know, if you remove that statue and hit it away and buried it underneath the ground, guess what? You know, the movement that is the Confederacy, that is the Civil War, is still a part of who we are. And burning books as they did back in Nazi Germany in the 1930s and 40s and burning bibles, guess what? Christ still lives.
Right, yeah. But when you take a snapshot of where we are now, it's two years later, no, probably four years later. I can't even remember when we had this stuff.
It's been about four years, yeah.
Right, absolutely, yeah. So, you know, are we making progress? And just as specifically, we have this incredibly diversifying county. 30% of our kids are speaking 70 languages or something like that. We are becoming different.
I think, I think it depends on who you ask. And I guess sometimes it depends on the hour of the day and the day of the week. We are changing. You know, you sit down and talk to Dr. Griffiths and look at the enrollment numbers for Talbot County and the percentage of non-white Hispanics who are living down in Talbot County. in Toba County, and how we are changing the way we educate in this county. You look at organizations like BAM, Derek Daly and his group, and what they're doing to try to shorten the achievement gap when it comes to African-American students. We are changing, I think we're becoming more aware, and I think that's the first step to change. And I always salute Sheriff Gamble and Lucy Hughes from the Rotary, what they did with Purple Project. Project Purple is an awareness campaign. Someone wrote an editorial in a paper about two or three weeks back, I was coming back from Mexico, and I read it in the paper, and they were really slamming Project Purple. And I don't think the writer of that editorial really understood what Project Purple actually is. It's not, what it's not is it's not a silver bullet, and I don't think any of the founders or organizers ever said, if you do Project Purple, you'll never have a person in your county with substance abuse. That was never proclaimed from anyone. It is an awareness campaign to open the discussion, to get people out of the closet, so to speak, and to start talking openly and frankly about substance abuse addiction. It's better, it's best to understand before you're understood. So it's best to understand what someone else is going through before you try to force on them to understand what you're going through. So I always try to understand what the man next to me is going through before I try to force on him to understand me. What the Purple Project was trying to do is to, first of all, raise the level of conversation. And I was saying that even at the state level, through the Good Samaritan Act, even the laws when it comes to dealing with persons of substance abuse, if you are with an individual and he overdosed, and you make a call to law enforcement, you can't be charged, even if they come into the room and they find materials in the room, substance in the room, because you made that call to save this person's life. And unfortunately, even here in Toba County, we know the story about the young man who died and his friends basically left him on the side of the road because they were afraid. And the Good Samaritan law came about because of those types of incidents where you had people who were engaged in behaviors that are not really healthy for them, someone unfortunately goes unconscious, and the other people in the room, they don't make a call. And unfortunately, people have died because of that. So even at the state level, we've changed laws through the Justice Reinvestment Act, we changed that law so that law enforcement officers, probation agents, can't violate somebody if they overdose and they're taken to the hospital by a unit, we can't charge them with that. The courts have been put on notice as far as how many, how much time they can give a person who's coming before them for a violation of probation, 15 days on the first offense, 30 days on the second offense, and 45 days on the third offense. So you can't just slam them and give them a year's worth of backup time, you have to try to work with them. So that's where I think that we, as a people, have to understand that when it comes to substance abuse, that it is a problem. And I was talking with the writer that was writing in the paper a couple of weeks ago, who was really getting on the Project Purple, and Sheriff Gamble and Lucy and Ms. Hughes. This is not a new phenomenon. In Baltimore City in the early 80s, when they were going through their HRV epidemic, I remember Mayor Kurt Smoak had an idea to hand out hypodermic needles. And people in Baltimore were sitting around, they thought he was crazy, they thought Kurt Smoak was out of his mind, you can't give people needles, are you kidding me? Well, now we call it harm reduction. And now you can, not just give out needles, but the health department, they give out condoms.
Yeah, that's right.
So, but he was a little bit before his time with the idea, and in 1980s, people thought he was absolutely out of his mind. But sometimes you have to think out of the box when it comes to addressing a problem that's so big that you can't, you can't address it with the same old format that you used 20 years ago. You have to use new angles, new ways to address the problem.
So we've got a lot of things we can use, but we've covered several issues, but maybe you have some other issues that you want to address, and then you mentioned the hospital, but I think that, you know, it's your turn. If I've forgotten something, or maybe just make your case.
Well, I mean, again, being a member of the council, I always call myself a servant leader, and I don't mind being called a servant, I don't mind working with people for people. You know, Douglass said, work with anyone who wants to do good and nobody who wants to do bad, you know, so, I may not be quoting him just right, but, yeah, I mean, I've worked with so many different groups, from people in prison ministries to substance abuse, to housing issues, that, you know, sometimes you have to back off and say, well, wait a minute, you know, I need time for me. But if there's ever an initiative or something going on that I think I can help out with, I don't mind helping, I don't mind getting in and getting involved. And I don't have to be the one sitting at the head of the table, I don't mind coming in and standing in the back of the room and listening, and then offering something that I know that will help further the agenda. And so, you know, it's not about, you know, spotlights, it's not about headlines, it's about getting it done at the end of the day. And I think that's the part I like about being on the council, is getting the work done. And you're never going to make everybody happy, and I think, you know, I've learned a while ago that if you're making everybody happy, you're doing something wrong, you really are. And, you know, I've always tried to be as open as possible with people and say, hey, look, this is why I'm not voting for this, or this is why I did vote for this. You know, there were people, one amendment that was offered up recently was Amendment 4, dealing with the zoning ordinance, and I remember talking to someone recently at the forum we just had, and they came up to me and said, I know that was a difficult vote for you. And I said, oh, not really. I said, it wasn't difficult for me. When I sat down and looked at what the amendment actually said, and I sat down and reread Resolution 250 and state law and case law, I said, well, no, it wasn't a difficult vote for me. So, you know, it's about trying to look for ways to accomplish things, working with people. And of course, understanding that you can't be everything to everybody, and there are limitations even on yourself physically and mentally, so. But I enjoy it, you know, it sometimes can be very long evenings and a lot of nights reading, and I've taken work on vacations with me, and sat by the pool and looking at stuff as, you know, I called in from Mexico.
I was going to say.
So people, so I don't think anyone can really doubt my call to serve. And if it needs to be done, you know, well, then say, okay, how can we get it done, you know? And so, and if that, if my vote ticks some people off, then it's going to happen, that's just life. You know, I can't make everybody happy. If you want to talk to me, I'd be glad to explain to you why. And I've had, I've had many times, I've been doing this for 10-plus years, where I've talked to people and actually they've changed my mind. And I've gone and reversed my vote and gone another way because of the additional information I've got from people, yeah.
Nothing wrong with changing your mind.
No, no.
I don't know how it got such a bad name. Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you, thank you.